Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everyone to a special budget meeting of the August 29th, 2018, meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I would like to call this meeting in order. Would you please rise with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, if you could please have the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Plurg.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Air Proton Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Campana.
Here.
In front of you, you see the agenda. Would somebody like to approve it? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that the agenda be approved.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, carries, seven zero. Announcements? I have none. Public comment? We come to public comment. If someone would like to adjust the commission on today's business items, this would be it. I'm going to open public comment. Does anybody wish to address over at the side? Name, address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is John G. Croft. I live in Fort Pointe, Tennessee, Marquette.
Again. Hey. Now you can hear me. I wanted to start by commending the people who put this document together. There's a lot of good information in here, and I hope to be able to attend all four sessions, but in the event I don't, I have some questions that I would hope that be answered over the course of these discussions. There's some terminology in the budget that I'm not familiar with. The phrase tranche list, T-R-A-N-C-H-E. And then there's two different type of projects. One is listed as a Sleeping Beauty, and the other one is a Prince Charming. And I believe they have a very defined meaning within the term of Marquette, but when you're talking, however you're talking, if you come across that term, please understand, I don't know exactly what it means. I think some of it means if we have money, we'll spend it, but I don't exactly know. So if you could explain tranche list, Sleeping Beauty, and Prince Charming. And then on one page, there's an item relating to Cliff's Dow. I'm going to find the page. Give me a second. It's page 11. At the top, it says future committed funds, AKA Sleeping Dragons. That's not a Sleeping Beauty, that's a Sleeping Dragon, and you can understand my concern. First of all, the Cliff's Dull Plant site, it says it's remediation for $1.35 million. It says it's ongoing testing started, consultant discussing with DNRE. When you get to this page, I would hope someone would discuss a little bit about what's being done, because the last I heard, they had put the Cliff's Dull site out for a request for proposal to sell it, and I was unaware that the city was doing any remediation. And that's what, sorry, that's what I have so far. And again, my compliments to the people who put this together. There's a lot of good information in here. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Anyone else want to adjust the commission? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. We come to the consent agenda. Someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that the consent agenda be approved.
We need a second. Commissioner Frazier?
Say it.
All those in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose, carries, seven zero. We come to new business. Okay, how are we going to start? Are we going to go right to?
I will start.
You will start?
I'm going to start by saying this. In all my years here, this is the first time anybody's ever publicly commented at one of these, so it's throwing me off my game a little bit. Maybe Gary too, but I'm not sure. But anyway, and Margaret, just so you know, it took most of us several years to understand what tranche meant as well, but that was a term that was previously introduced as a reserve, a list of things that we would like to complete.
Nice to have.
Yeah. There you go.
The literal translation, it's a French term, which means piece of the pie, and it's actually an official business term, so that's why we use it. The unofficial term, which, when we use the word tranche, it sends people into heebie-jeebies because of the way it was first introduced, but we prefer to use Prince Charmings for that word.
And to answer one of your other questions, the Cliff's Dull property will probably be addressed during the community development portion of this process, which is, what day is that going to be, Gary?
That'd be September 6th.
September 6th. Well, to start the discussion today, I just want to touch on a few points. First of all, thank you all for coming at this time of day, and it makes it a lot easier for staff and us, the rest of us or all of us, to put these things together and present them in a timely fashion. If you've read the budget or started to read it, if you've read the transmittal letter, which is on page five, I believe, you probably understand the basics of everything that we're going to talk about during the next few days. Gary will provide most of the detail as we move forward, and for those that haven't been through this process before, feel free to ask questions as we go along of me, Gary, or any of the staff that is here. Traditionally, we do this in a fashion where each department head comes up and presents their budget individually. As a little background information, and just to touch on a few points that were in the transmittal letter, we're experiencing a reduction overall in the city of revenue for the general fund. It's not something that is unexpected, however, it's something that is probably hitting us a year earlier than we had anticipated. We're down about 2.8% in tax revenue since 2016. So, you know, over the course of the last few years, actually several years, we've been working very hard at reducing the costs associated with this budget. Every year, we've made cuts in one form or another. Over time, departments have been shrunken. Some have regained, some of their staff that may have been put on hold, but some are still This year's budget is about 2% lower than our budget last year, less. So we have made efforts to reduce it, however, we're still going to be faced with a need for a fund balance transfer to balance this budget. In other words, a transfer from savings, and again, we'll get into those details as we move along. And, you know, we have some things in place, and I'm sure all of you are aware of the plan that we have put together for compensating, or at least partially compensating, for the closing of the We Energy Plant. We hope to, by the sale of property, which I think is going to be imperative in the development of that property, we hope to pay off two existing bonds that will free up in the area of $1 million annually for the general fund. We did not apply that this year. We had planned on applying it next year, so we've made as many adjustments as we can this year to avoid applying that move. So the budget you're going to see this year is based on a, it's a deficit budget, but it's balanced through the transfer of funds from basically the savings account. We feel comfortable with that this year. Hopefully, next year, when things line up in a different way, and if we get those bonds paid off, we'll be in a little better position. I'm not saying we will be perfectly balanced, but, you know, that's our goal. I had one other thought, but I lost it. Anyway, it's, from our perspective, not to paraphrase or mimic anybody, but we have a little bit of a revenue problem, not necessarily an expense problem. We've done everything we can within the rights or the means of what we have to reduce the expenses, short of cutting staff and services. It's our opinion that this community expects a certain level of service, and that level requires a certain staff level. And to be honest with you, we're just kind of hanging on now with what we have. I mean, there's so much going on in town that the staff we have is adequate, but that's about it. If anything, I'd like to add staff, if we can get more money, to try to better the services and try to speed up the process for some things being done, but I think we're going to give you a budget that's acceptable. Gary?
Thank you. This will be really quick, because Mike just said everything pretty much I was going to, but I have pictures, and I have a presentation. So we did come up with a 239-page budget book, and don't worry, we will get through it. I know you're all hanging on the edge of your seat, concerned about that. We do have four budget sessions scheduled, and actually, there's a little bit of a theme to each session. Like, today's session is mostly of the general administration and the police and fire. These are areas that typically don't bring in a lot of revenue, but they are very essential functions, because we wouldn't have a city hall without these. The next session, which is September 4th, will be community services, or as I like to call it, the John Swenson Day. So we'll be going over his area, which is community services, which is the arts and parks and recreation-type activities. Then the third session, September 6th, is mostly the public works and the utilities day. And then the last session, September 11th, is what I call the Friends of the City. They are actually component units of the city, not direct departments of the city, but they do provide a very good service to the city, and they are a part of the budget that we present to you. So having said that, I'll get into my presentation, and we'll try to get through everything really quick. I know everybody has other places they need to be with, so we'll be as quick as we can. This was almost a theme of this budget. Certainly not a quote by me, but a famous author, Dante. But we also aren't here. Definitely not here.
Two slides in, and he's killing you already. Killing you.
Awesome. I know somebody knows how to use a microphone.
Well, just recently, we had a challenge after the arts did their presentation, for everybody to beef up their presentation, so that's what I did. So now getting into the more serious stuff, we did present a budget, which we aren't recommending any layoffs, no reduction in wages or fringe benefits, and we did budget as tightly as possible in all areas. Department heads all throughout the city deserve a round of applause, because everybody took it very seriously. They knew the challenges we were up against, and it certainly makes it a lot easier when we're down to the nitty-gritty and trying to start nickel-and-dime things. As Mike mentioned, we did have to balance the general fund budget by using $537,000 of fund balance. Hopefully, by the end of the year, we won't have to use anywhere close to that, but for legal purposes, that's the amount we needed to balance the budget. And then just a point of statistics, I guess. One mil of property taxes does equal $658,000. Now, that's down quite a bit. We were approaching close to $700,000 per mil, but due to tax tribunal cases, that's now down to $658,000. Here's just a little graph comparing the current fiscal year we're in now, 2018, with The 2018 budget came in at $21,750,065. The current budget is, well, the proposed budget for 19 is $21,343,070. So we're actually presenting a budget with less dollars in it than the current fiscal And as Mike mentioned, in FY '16, at its apex, we're collecting just short of $9.5 million in real personal property taxes. For FY '19, we're going to be short of $9.2 million, so that's a decline of 2.8%. And if you use FY '16 as the base year, and just use a minimum of 2% inflation each year, we should be at just over $10 million. So that actually puts us in a hole for this year of $840,000, or 9.2%. Another challenge we have is Proposal A. If Proposal A were not in place, we'd be collecting over $1 million more each year in property taxes. So just between those two areas, that's very close to $2 million that we don't have, which, as you'll see, we actually could have used for this budget. Now, we do have the ability to raise taxes. We can go up to our headly limit, which would be an additional 2.9782 mils, which would bring in just short of $2 million. And if you wanted to do a headly override vote, like the library is doing, we could bring an additional 4.7 mils, or roughly $3.1 million. Now, we aren't recommending a tax increase at all. For the past 300 years, I think we've kept the tax rate the same, but you can see the challenges that we're having just by not increasing taxes. We're having to squeeze the turnip as dry as possible. We aren't there yet, but we got close this year to taking a good, hard look at the services we're providing, but we think we're able to put that off for a while yet.
Excuse me, Gary, just a question. You may not have the information in front of you, but when you talk about, go back to this last slide, if you would, please.
Go back a slide?
Yeah. When you talk about 2.9782 mils, and you talk about 4.7275 mils, how much is that to the average taxpayer, let's say, $100,000 property assessment?
Well, one mil is per $1,000, so if you had a $100,000 house, your taxable value would be half, so it'd be 50,000, so 5,000 times 14.9225. I don't have enough fingers, so I can't add that up, but that's how you would calculate it.
Okay. Thanks.
And here's another graph that just compares the current budget year with next year's requested budget. And as you really see, and this is dividing expenditures up by function, general government, health and safety is your police and fire, public works, parks and rec, and transfers out. We'll get into transfers out a little bit later, but that's what we need to transfer to debt service funds for the general fund, and it also, the general fund balances out the operations in the major and local street funds and the Lakeview Arena Fund. And as you can see, we really have a history of, you know, it's within the same ballpark. And this is expenditures again, but by different categories. Salary and fringes are basically 65% for both years. Capital outlay was where we saw the biggest change. In the current year, it's 5%. For the proposed year, it's 2%. And everything else is pretty much in line with previous years. As Mike already mentioned, next year's proposed budget is 1.9% lower than FY '18, and that's because the revenues aren't coming in at where they need to be. In order to get down to the budget that we presented, each department, we sat down with, and we cut out $2.1 million of what they had proposed, and these are what's on the tranche list, or the Prince Charming list, as we now prefer to call it. So what about the utility funds? We'll get into that September 6th, but just for your information, an increase of 1% in the rates of storm waters will bring in an additional $13,000. Water, $42,000. Sewer, $54,000. After the Rattellis Utility Rate Study, the recommendation is to raise storm water rates 15 and 1/4%, water, 12 and 1/4%, sewer, 25, and as I said, there'll be more discussion. Sorry, I got ahead of myself. Trying to make it interesting, everybody. I'm competing with the arts people. It's a secret. Ancient Chinese secret. So here's Prince Charmings and Sleeping Dragons. Prince Charmings are listed on page...
Gary, this was always a nice on power plant. Page 12 is the Prince Charmings list, and this refers to the $2.1 million that we had to cut out to give you the budget that we have. And how we treat the Prince Charmings, should we get unexpected sources of revenue, or expenses come in under budget in other areas, this is the list we will go to and bring to you of things we would like to add back into the budget.
Would you buy, would you go to these items and pursue them before, don't you have to pay back that money to the general fund, the $537,000? Or you're not, maybe you haven't taken it out yet? You project to take it out?
Yeah. I mean, in the ideal situation, we wouldn't have to use any fund balance, and we could fund all of these $2.1 million of stuff, but in reality, we're probably going to end up not funding any of the Prince Charmings and still using $537,000 of fund balance. But that'd be the city commission's decision to make. We will certainly make recommendations to you, but it would ultimately be up to you if you want, say we, somebody out of the goodness of their heart gave the city a million dollars, you know, it's like, how would we spend that million dollars? That's...
Oh, wow.
We'd certainly give you a recommendation, but it's up to you how you want to do that.
I mean, how bad do you want to put that $537,000 back into the general fund?
Oh, I would love to put it back into the general fund. You bet.
So is that not the first concern?
It is mine, yes.
We'll take your recommendation, then.
Well, it's just a situation, you can ask 10 different people their opinion, and you're going to get 10 different opinions as to what's going to happen.
Gary, if we're really saying, with money that you're pulling out of the general fund, that forgiving the obligation, authority to pull the money out of the general fund, or not pulling it, we need it. Shouldn't, for example, revenue share actually give us, owe us, that that money would be what, not the money from...
Correct. Yep, correct.
That's an authority, that's not an obligation. We're not going to pull money out of the general fund, we're offering the budget right now.
Well, the $537,000 is needed to balance the budget. So at the end of the year, say you approve the budget as is, and at the end of the year, if everything goes in exactly according to budget, we will have shown a use of fund balance of $537,000.
But if we get revenue share money like we should, can we transfer that money back to the general fund?
Yep, then that could reduce the use of fund balance, or it could be used to fund some of these things on the Prince Charmings.
I would hope we would have the fortitude to repay the fund balance.
Yeah, and like we said, that's my goal, but I can't say that's everybody's goal.
Thank you.
Well, we were going to handle that differently. Yeah, the next one is the Sleeping Dragons list, or it's also called the Future Committed Funds. These are those items that we know are down the road. They didn't have to go into the current year budget, but we do know they're going to hit us in future years. And these items are on page 11 of the budget. And so these are items we just want to keep in the forefront to let everybody know that we know these things are coming down the pike. They don't have to be addressed immediately, but we will have to fund these at some point. And the costs that we know of are over $68 million, and there are three probably fairly big ones that we aren't sure of the costs. So you could safely say this list alone is over $70 million, which is basically over three years of general fund budget. So kind of the moral of the story, as Mike said, overall, we view the issues facing us as revenue problems, not necessarily expense problems. We also have yet to fill the full brunt of We Energies. I've heard "We" is closing down in the middle of FY '19. I think it was, was it April or May? May of '19. So once they close down, that's when we're going to start filling the full brunt. We think we have enough in reserve to cover us for a few short years, but we won't be able to continue on forever, which kind of brings us to the next point. That's why the proposed property sales and the related economic development associated with those properties are very crucial to current and even better to future years. Because we don't do it because it's a fun thing to do, we do it because we're trying to fight for the survival of the city at this point. And it's also critical to shore up revenue sources. That's why we're proposing the BLP charter change, and hopefully, that'll be approved. If not, we'll have to circle the wagons, because that'd be another hit we'll have to deal with. So having said all of that, we're now ready to get on with the show. So Susan is up next.
Ladies first. I'm going to talk about the overall salaries and fringe benefit budgets in aggregate for all of the departments, so that we don't spend time with each department going through their individual accounts. And I guess this year, it's actually a fairly good news story, very small increases, if any, and in a lot of fringe benefit accounts, they either stayed the same or they actually Salaries and wages are 2% across the board being recommended, and 2% is in all the bargaining unit contracts. Health and prescription drug coverage, dental and vision, PA 152, hard caps, keep our health increases to a fairly reasonable amount. We base our budgeting on what the state allows us to pay for single, two-person, and family coverage. And then the employees have to pay whatever is over those hard caps. So far, this has worked really well for the employees and for the city. It's kept our costs reasonable, and the employees have been able to have a very good benefit plan. We've been creative with how we do our health. We kind of self-fund a high deductible plan, so. Retiree health insurance also this year went down, this year, both because we have capped that benefit for new hires, so anybody being hired into the city now has no expectation of a retiree health plan when they do retire. In addition, we've put in a lot of the cost savings features that we put into our active plans for our retirees, and we have those retirees over 65 on a Medicare Advantage Plan, which has also saved a lot of money. Another area of good news is basically our life insurance in AD&amp;D. Our current carrier has agreed to keep the rates the same until 2020. Unemployment insurance decreased 15%. Unemployment insurance decreased quite a lot. We have a merit rate that's based on our past experience. And we saw a 0.65% decrease this year in the merit rate, which gives a significant decrease to what we have to pay for unemployment insurance. Our workers' comp is, has remained basically unchanged from the previous year. The pension plan, the MERS-defined benefit plan, we are paying slightly less this year than we did last year. This is for a couple of reasons. All of the bargaining unit employees agreed to an increase in their contributions. They're now contributing 6% instead of 5% to the pension. And we're also seeing a couple of the closed divisions for management, department heads and middle managers that was closed to new hires back in 2000. And has, because it's closed and no new money goes into that division, we have to pay off that liability quick, more quickly. And those amounts have been quite large. And they've increased every year. This is the first year they've actually started going down. So we've kind of crested the hill and they should be continuing to decrease going forward. And, oh, and at the time that I put together some of this information, we didn't have the Fire and Police Actuarial. We do have that now, that has gone up slightly. But that plan is still fairly, it's 74% funded this year, so. We're still doing pretty good there. Anybody have any questions? Actually, 61.
61%.
Mm-hmm, it's 63 next year. We've already gotten the actuarial for next year.
Okay, so we're anticipating a 2% increase then from this year to next year?
Right, we're going in the right direction.
Would it be fair to say then we ought to see something similar in the year following?
I think so.
I mean, I'm not asking you to forecast, I'm just...
It, it's hard to predict because it is largely dependent on how the stock market behaves and the return on investments that MERS does for us.
We are bringing, we've, all new hires come into a division with a lower benefit level. So over time, as people retire, you are going to see that helping.
Tell me if I'm, if I'm wrong in my story, but as I remember first on the commission, I think we were pretty close, like in the 90s for some of our plans? This would have been back about 2004, 2006.
Fire and Police was overfunded for...
Yeah, Police and Fire are overfunded, in fact. And then all of a sudden, you know, the Great Recession hit, and all of that goes down to the bottom. And then they throw in restrictive investment requirements, which do not allow us to play anything but the safest non-returnable, you get nothing for your money bonds. So no matter what we throw in, we'd never make those gains like we should be making the gains. Is that a fair story?
To some extent, there are also, we had in the past done things like offered early out windows that are very costly to do. And we're still, you know, kind of paying for some of that. Benefit enhancements that we made. I don't think, I think MERS is better now about letting people know what the true cost of that is than they may have been in the past.
I mean, I'd love to take our money, go downtown to an investment counselor and say, let's make some money, instead of locking it up.
But they also do, you know, they smooth the assets and the, and so when you make large gains, they smooth that out over time. It's the same way they smooth out losses, so you don't realize the full amount in the year that it actually occurs.
The smoothing, thank you.
I have a question for Susan. It may not be reflected in, in this report, which is a great report, by the way. I've been seeing on the monthly check register, I think it's a monthly, well, however often the check register happens, the 44 North admin fees of about $5,300 a month. Can you explain what those fees are for?
44 North administers what we call our seamless wrap. So we buy a high deductible plan from Blue Cross with $5,000, $10,000 deductible, knowing that most employees are not going to access their full deductible every year. So we have a deductible for employees that's say 250 or 500. Anytime people exceed that, we, we pay that. It's like being self-funded for that high deductible plan. So when that happens, when someone exceeds that, that's what we are paying.
Okay.
And there's also a $20 per month fee per employee.
I thought that we were paying $5,300 a month to 44 North to administer?
No.
So that was, okay.
They call it in, yeah, they call it in.
So it's kind of like you're self-insured?
Yes, we're sort of semi-self insured for the health plan.
Good answer, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we get into the actual budget book part of it. And I'm going to do something this year that we haven't done in the past. I'm going to try to put the page we're talking about up on the TV screen so that anybody watching from home or people out in the audience can see exactly what we're looking at. So it'd be a little bit of a juggling act, so please bear with me as I try to keep it all straight. But starting on page 43, these are the, what we consider the non-departmental revenues, which are mostly the property taxes and also the revenue sharing and other things like that. Property taxes, we already touched on. We are seeing a decrease mostly due to a tax tribunal cases. State revenue sharing, the other thing we had to do to balance the budget and in addition to using 537,000 of fund balance. We used to not try to budget for the statutory revenue sharing, the 357,000. Because there are things we have to do to qualify that. Now, I'm very sure we're going to qualify to get it. That's why I feel comfortable in putting it in the budget. But in years past, we never budgeted for that and we considered that our reserve, our go-to reserve in case unexpected things happened. Or if we had labor contracts that were in negotiation, we would use that money to help fund that once those were settled. So, uh, I really don't have anything to say other than we're keeping the, we're recommending the tax rate to be 14.9225, which it's been for the past several years. And everything else, it's just our best projection that we have. State revenue sharing, we're using the state's projections. State revenue sharing is made up of mostly a lot of sales tax. And maybe I should explain, if, say, you buy something in Marquette and you pay sales tax, it doesn't mean Marquette necessarily gets a sales tax. That sales tax goes to Lansing and then Lansing distributes it to all the municipalities based on a formula. Same thing with state revenue sharing. As I said, the statutory part, there are conditions we have to comply with, which we do. And then everything else, like I said, is just really our best estimate that we have as of today. You have any questions on the non-departmental revenues? Correct, that is correct. And going back to 2000, that's when they really started, uh, started what I call actually non-revenue sharing. If you go back to the original formulas and just my crude calculation, that's another million dollar hit, hit per year to the city's general fund. So if you take state revenue sharing, proposal A, and tax tribunal cases, that's actually $3 million that the general fund is doing without that we would normally have. Yep, exactly, yep, yep. So with no further questions, we're ready to get into the other, next part of the budget, which would be, we'll go into central administration, which would be legislative, which is the city commission budget. And Mike will present that, and we'll be on page 52. Or is Wendy gonna present?
I'll, I'll present, Wendy's just gonna make me look good, that's all. Yeah, well, actually Wendy did bulk of the work, so. 52.
Gary, could you just repeat that tax rate, 14 point?
14.9225.
Thank you.
Yes.
Page 52 is the fact sheet, fact sheet. Everything is pretty much the same as every year. You know, we have some revenue through fees, I think, which are generally related to what we would, what we should be charging for weddings and such. If the mayor, for example, were to preside over a wedding, we're supposed to charge. We don't often do that, but just in case we do, we budget a little bit. And as well as if we have a rental or some other use of this facility, we, we have the ability to rent out if we need to. We have pass-through money that is attributed to the legislative section of this budget, which is our tribal money, the 2% money that we see often on commission agendas that is distributed in the community. I tried two years ago to, to cut a commissioner to save money, but that didn't work. So I'm not going to try again this year. But, um, you know, we have six commissioners that are paid a total of $53,900 over the course of the year. The meetings are listed below that. The mayor gets an additional $2,800 a year as acting as, on behalf of the mayor. Any questions on the fact sheet? If not, okay.
Says mayor 2,500 and then it says 2,800. And then when they multiply 7,500 by 7, that doesn't give me 539. So are the, have these descriptions maybe just not been updated?
Yeah, maybe, did we mess those up?
Because I think these maybe have increased.
I need your help with that one, Wendy, sorry. You know what she's talking about?
It shows 7,700 per commissioner if I divide 539 by 7? Not sure if that's true or not.
So 7,500.
I have to check my notes.
Per commissioner.
I think it is 7,700.
It is, yeah.
So then it really is 2,800 for the mayor.
Right.
I'm just making sure what's actually happening versus what's in the budget.
I think what happened, the local officers' compensation committee gave us an estimate of what they think it will be increased the next time they meet. And we had some debate, do we put that number in or leave it current? So I think we got some notes mixed up this time.
I do believe 7,700 is the current amount, so that's why it would have been, been in place already for '18. Sorry, I know it's a small thing, but I just want to make sure it's right.
We'll have to check that, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, 7,700 times six, times seven is 539. And then we add additional $2,500 a year. I don't know why it says 28, it must be 28. So I would guess both notes underneath the multiplier, the times are probably incorrect, so. And as Gary explained, the, we probably got it lost somewhere in our transitioning through the compensation committee. But I'll give you the choice, if you want to take the lesser number, I'll be happy to do that, but I'm...
I think we're already getting the higher numbers.
Yeah, you are, but if you want to go backwards, I'll, I'll be happy to entertain that, that motion. No. Other than that, is there anything else on the fact sheet? Okay, moving on to the next page, page 54. Expenditures legislative. These are historically the same every year. Some changes that I did make and recommend. 101-860, economic development promotions. No, that's 880. 818, 101-860 is transportation. Normally, that's where we budget the two trips to the MML conference for a total of about $18,000 annually. I'm recommending that we cut that to one trip per year and cut that line in half to 9,000. I'm further recommending that, that, I guess we could decide amongst us which meeting you want to go to, but I personally find the spring one, the Lansing trip, probably a little more beneficial to the commission. It does give us the opportunity to communicate with our legislators, our lobbyists and others in Lansing. However, that is, can be left up to the commission. 101-880 is economic development. I had a certain amount of money put into that of 75,500. I had added an additional 20,000 this year in anticipation of a potential relationship with an outside entity like the Lake Superior Community Partnership if we were to improve an economic development plan. That plan that is currently on my desk that has not been approved calls for that relationship as well as a relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. But I guess my, I guess not better judgment, but I guess in order to save some money, I, I cut the 20,000 from that account and not, not move forward with the relationship with the partnership, at least at this time. If something changes in the future, we can rediscover it, yes.
I hear the words you're saying, I'm just having a hard time following on here. What you mean by cut, by 20,000?
Yeah, the 101-880.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
It's down to 50,500.
Yeah.
It originally was 70,500.
Where would I see 70,500?
Well, I'm just telling you, that's what we had originally had in it.
Got it.
And we cut it down to 55 to, uh, to try to save a little bit of money.
Thank you.
I'm also recommending that we cut the UP Education Summit, which is about $1,800 a year. And the reason I'm recommending that is because it's actually poorly attended unless it's in Marquette. And we don't generally spend the money anyway, so I didn't see any sense of having it in the budget. I'm cutting, recommending that we cut about $200 from the NMSA training for committees. And, uh, I don't know if it's a cut, Gary, but is the Superior Trade Zone membership, is that a cut or is that just a change?
It's a reduction. We were paying 10,000 and it's been dropped to 5,000 dollars.
So those are the changes I'm recommending at the commission or legislative level. Where are we on the Chamber of Commerce? Well, we currently have budgeted the $4,999. The infamous 4,490, $4,999. We still have that in the budget. We are somewhat committed through other means. I like the community calendar for a three-year term that we hope to fulfill. And is, is from our estimation, at least my, my estimation, the, the chamber membership still is a desirable membership for the community and the city.
What is this 4,500 dollars in promotional items, what is that for, under the 880?
Those are the T-shirts and pins and those kind of items that you give out to board members.
I feel like we could cut there personally. I feel like they're cutting in a lot of other areas in the city and we could make some other cut in our, in our branch, in our codes here, but that's just me. Now is the time to talk about it, right? Now is the time to talk about it, right?
Yes. Yes. What's in that? I mean, besides T-shirts, pins?
Pins.
Pins?
Miscellaneous, like we used it for the city-to-city gift, those type of items.
Yeah, Fred.
I would suggest strongly that that's an item we want to retain from the standpoint that our committees work hard for us and this is a very small token that we can give them. And if, if we're looking at trying to balance the budget, we're not going to make it on four thousand dollars.
I understood that to mean that was for just for the commissioners or is that for all committees?
No, that's for
So I'm, I'm, I misunderstood. I apologize for that.
No, it's not for commissioners.
I understand. Thank you.
You think about the people who are
Yep.
Leaving committees.
Mm-hmm. I didn't know.
Give them a T-shirt. Give them something.
Yeah.
T-shirt. The ones coming in, get a pin. I know it's not much, but it's something. And it is, it is nice to have something like
Oh, yeah.
Like for the sister city exchange that
I thought that was just commissioner and I'm going, how are we spending forty-five hundred dollars on T-shirts for seven people in a year? That's why I'm like
Have you seen the commissioner tire lately?
Never mind. I take it back.
Have you seen the mayor lately? No, I'm just kidding.
He's wearing a really nice shirt today. Forty-five hundred dollar shirt right there. I'm sorry, I misunderstood, guys.
Ostrich skin? So, yeah. Any other questions? Okay. So I guess we move on then to
Page fifty-five, the city managers.
City manager executive. The fact sheet is page fifty-five. It outlines the positions that I have. City manager, assistant city manager, executive assistant, and then management analyst. Revenue is what are our fixed charges, Gary?
What are, what are fixed charges?
For our executive.
Yeah, those are, fixed charges is what we use to allocate, in essence, overhead to like our utility funds. That's to cover the cost of certain departments like city manager, finance, treasurer, HR, city attorney. And so we charge those other funds these amounts. And this is the city, in this case, this is the city manager's share of that charge.
Thank you. Any questions on the fact sheet? Moving on then to page fifty-six. Expenditures. These are relatively consistent from year to year. The one cut that I did make here, actually there's two, is to one seven two eight six zero, transportation, which would be one of my trips to the MML conference to coincide with the one you choose not to go to. Or maybe I should go to the one you choose not to go to. I don't know. You know, maybe, maybe you don't want me around. I don't know. But that's about fifteen hundred dollars, fourteen hundred and fifty dollars. And then I'm also suggesting that we cut my miscellaneous manager travel, which is five hundred dollars. It's small, but it's something we, we probably can do without. Questions?
Something has just looking at your membership fees, you're suggesting that you, you cut Economic Club for two eighty?
No, I'm leaving the Economic Club in.
Okay. All of those are
Those are staying, yeah. UP Labor Management, that's Conference. And then the NMSAs are money we would spend if there was some local training that someone from my office would need to attend.
Yeah, so thank you.
Okay, now we're ready to get into the financial services area. We'll start on page fifty-seven, but if I could ask my staff, Mary and Miles, to start making their way up, please. So page fifty-seven starts the fact sheet for financial services. Financial Services actually has three divisions in it. Finance, utility billing, well, actually four divisions. Finance, utility billing, treasurer, and the assessors area. Within the division of finance, we have me, the CFO. We also have a staff accountant and accounts payable clerk. You see our salaries there. And just below that, we have our program statistics. These are the things that we do on a year-to-year basis. Going into the the actual expenses, expenditures. My budget is really status quo. About the only thing that's changed dramatically is the, the technology fee. And Todd can talk more about that when he gets into it. But our IT function is actually an internal service fund, and it charges out each department their fair share of what the technology is. And we try to be all-inclusive on technology, not only computers, but also copiers, telephones and those kind of things. But like I said, Todd can get more into that. Other than that, about the only other thing my department does, we handle the outgoing mail for the city, for all departments. And as such, we have to rent a mail machine and a folding machine. And what you see in one oh-one, two oh-two, nine forty, the last actual line item, that's what it costs us to keep that going. In the one oh-one, two oh-two, eight oh-one, that's kind of a catch-all. That's where we charge audit fees and banking fees. And when we do bond issues, I'll charge a lot of that here. So like I said, basically about the only change outside of salary infringes is the tech fee. And we have no control over that because Todd told me what number to put in there. So you have any questions on one oh-one, two oh-two? If not, we'll move on to Mary, the treasurer, page sixty-two.
Good afternoon. So just starting out, I kind of want to run through the revenues for my department. Again, as Gary had mentioned with the general fund, we're not really a revenue-driven type of department. So a lot of them have stayed pretty much the same. The first line item for four five two, those are the payment in lieu of taxes for our trailer parks. Again, there's pretty much a stagnant number of trailers that we have in there, so it's a pretty, it's always going to be the same, I should say. We have the non-licensed permits, which is our, mostly our landfill permits. Anybody that needs to dump within the county needs to collect a permit from a municipality, so that's where those revenues go. We have our fees for services, which is where we charge for NSFs. We charge for any delinquent AR accounts. We have the fixed charge allocation. That has gone up this year based on an agreement that we have with the, with the brownfield plan. And again, that's the allocation of my department's services to all the other funds. Restricted tickets and the parking meter tickets, we share that revenue fifty percent with the police department. Those are for non-meter parking violations and any other citations for that area. And I kind of left, if you look at the year-end estimate and also comparison to the actuals over the last couple of years, you're going to see I budgeted that pretty low. We did a lot of cleanup this year to try and collect some of the, the old revenue that's been, excuse me, the old citations that have been outstanding. This is all in hopes that we can get a new parking system to track our parking citations. So we're really trying to get that list cleaned up so when we do migrate to a new system, that it's a nice clean list and we know it's fully collectible. But I wanted to kind of conservatively budget that amount back down to our status quo of about forty thousand a year. And that's fifty percent of the revenue, so we're looking at about eighty thousand a year that we bring in, in ticket revenues. Other than that, it's a pretty quiet revenue side. Any questions on revenues?
Pretty hefty jump in the parking meter tickets.
My staff did an amazing job sending out statements and clearing up a lot of this stuff. I'm very proud of the work they've done.
Wow, look at that in three years.
Always an option.
I'll tell you one area that you can make some bank is if we actually ticket the handicap spots that are being inappropriately used. That's something that I watch religiously because I grew up with dad who was in crutches or a cart or walker my entire life. And it drives me nuts. Give me the authority. I'll ticket every one of those sons of guns. Badge me up. Let's make it happen.
Actually, we do ticket those quite often. And what we find most of the time is that they are handicapped people, but they forget to hang up their tag. And then they come into the station, police station, and we usually handle it, ticket that way. We don't dismiss it completely, but we reduce the fee or the fine. So, you know, a bulk of the time, it's just usually older people that have forgotten to put up their, their hanger.
I got the Y one time. Tell me, you knew more parking handicap spots with the Y, it went to three miles on the treadmill.
So moving on to page sixty-three for the fee schedule. Again, my fees, I'm not proposing any adjustments. Usually my fees for my department are either statutory determined by the state or by con, excuse me, by charter. And we have a couple that are contractually set. So then on to sixty-four for my expenditures. Again, the first half has kind of already been addressed by Susan. Salaries all the way down to retirement. Those are budgeted by her department for the contractual increases and the trickle-down effect of all those related expenditures. So my budget kind of starts at the one oh-one, two five three, seven two seven for office supplies. This is kind of a status quo, my needs for the department. With the new renovations, a lot of the things that I probably would have been proposing are being addressed through the renovation project, so I kind of brought that down to a status quo. The postage is remaining the same at about two thousand dollars a year. This is the cost of postage for the fifteen thousand parcel, or excuse me, tax bills that we send out every year. Professional contractual, the eight oh-one, started last year and I'm going to try and do it again this year. My department has the entry-level full-time position for the city, so when people start to post out, I need to, or what I have been doing is hiring temporary labor in there. So that's where this fee would be charged.
Just a quick question, and then if I can, maybe, maybe you would just read in the outrun line there with the postage, or I'm reading it improperly. Office supplies at two thousand, postage at eleven six. Am I misunderstanding you?
No, I think I read the wrong line item when I was making my dollar amount. So the eleven thousand, excuse me, is the cost of, the budgeted cost for the, oh, excuse me, the additional mailings for the parking citations also. So not only the tax bills, but also for the parking citations. I'm sorry. So then we were at the one oh-one, two five three, eight twelve for technology fee. That's, again, will be addressed with the IT department when they present. Printing and publishing, again, no major changes. You know, we, we know what our tax bills are going to be every year. We know how many we need to produce, so that fee is pretty much staying the same. Yeah, everything else is pretty much the same going on down. There's some training. I keep my training under the line item. I throw that under. Oh, under vehicle rental. Those are going to be the charges for the training that we attend. Any other questions? Jenna, of course.
I have a question on page sixty-three. Under Board and Light, Board of Light and Power Customer Electric Bill Collections, twenty-five cents per bill. Can you explain what that means?
Yeah, we have a reciprocal agreement with the BLP that they will collect our utility bills and we collect theirs. And then whoever, and then there's the twenty-five percent per bill on that. They collect less than we do, so, or excuse me, yes, they collect less than we do, so we get that twenty-five percent, or twenty-five cents per bill that they collect.
So do you just send the bill to them or you handle it if you get it?
We account for it and they send us a check.
For twenty-five cents each? It probably takes you a lot more time than twenty-five cents worth to process it. It just seems strange, that's all.
Every day we have to, we turn over our collections to them, so they know how many they're getting every day.
Okay. All right. Got it. Thank you.
So every time I drop off my bill here for BLP, you guys get twenty-five cents.
Twenty-five cents, correct.
It's a convenience thing. I mean, you'd be surprised how many people pay their bills in person.
Well, that's my point, is I, I can, I live right next door to the other one. I may as well just drop it off there.
Sure, go ahead. Yeah.
Get that extra quarter.
Add twenty-five cents.
Hear the, oh, hear the quarter hit the pink.
Question on page sixty-two, if I can. I'm looking at number of parking meter tickets collected. That's about two and a half a day. I don't know if that's good or bad. I mean, you hear so much complaining about the parking meters, and yet we're only collecting about two and a half tickets a day.
The number of restricted tickets collected?
Well, the last one down, number of parking meter tickets collected.
Okay.
You know, nine three six estimated for, or in twenty eighteen, that's about two-point five a day, which isn't really very many.
Yeah, those are the meter-related tickets. I would say, yeah, a lot of our ticket, our violations are going to come through on those handicap parking and those type of restricted, not necessarily our meter violations.
I just found it interesting, again, because you hear so much complaining about the meters, but yet we're really not working them hard enough, maybe, in terms of revenue stream.
It's got to be more than two a day.
I know, I mean, it's less than two and a half a day.
People are running to those meters. Saw it happen yesterday, as a matter of fact.
Yeah.
You could just go patrol them for them. Know exactly how much time they have depending on the meter.
An observation only.
Well, it is double what it, almost what it was in fourteen, fifteen, but the real revenue here is going to the DDA and they actually collect the media, meter coins and money as you put it in. These are just the violations for the tickets. And, and one thing I would note is that we've been off and on the last twelve months short of an enforcement person. We haven't had any real strict, we've, we went about three months straight without a consistent enforcement person. We had some ups and downs with people coming and going and things like that. So not that this year is down, but I wouldn't be surprised if that number increases.
Again, just, again, an observation on numbers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is page sixty-five with assessing. And Miles, our assessor extraordinary will present that.
If you take a look at the top page sixty-five, you can see the revenues that we have. And basically that isn't, you know, isn't changing that much. Most of our traffic is by the internet. You know, people are going to look up their assessment cards, information through the BSNA system. So what you see here are just the, the walk-in request and also the city charges for the platted and non-platted subdivision, divisions. So that's in there as well. The, the program statistics show you a historical view of the state equalized values for the city. Obviously, that two thousand sixteen is missing a one, should be eight, twelve. Bear in mind that this is the, or these are rather, the ad valorem role, not any of the IFT roles or the hospital role, the commercial facilities tax role. So these are, these are the ad valorem roles. Any questions on either one of those items? No? Okay. All right. That basically covered also page sixty-six because it's, there's an itemized list of those revenues there. Page sixty-seven, kind of like the same comments that Mary made, the, the top items we basically don't have any control over. So our department basically starts at the seven twenty-seven line. And if you compare the FY eighteen to the FY nineteen for that seven twenty-seven, you'll see there's just a slight increase for that. a slight increase for that. Basically, we were asked to be put in the budget for a drone, a lot easier than climbing up on the roofs for taking pictures. And that helps us out with the new construction and also with the, with the Michigan Tax Tribunal Appeals, it gives us an aerial view. Everybody, you know, has those nowadays, and it's, it's a lot easier. The other items, as you can see there, some of the line items went down, and the majority of them stayed the same. So, if you look at the FY eighteen, it's about three hundred and fifty, and if you look at FY nineteen, it's down to three forty-one. So, expenses are down from what they, what they were. I don't know if you have any questions? Other than that, that's all I have.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And I do want to thank Mary and Miles. Mary's other title is also the Assistant CFO, so she's my right hand. She's, she's the reason I still have hair left, so I do want to thank Mary, she's a big help, and Miles is truly extraordinary at his job, and he's a big help as well.
So, you delegate all your work to Gary, or what?
That's, that's my secret. So, next up is Ron with the Attorney's Budget, page seventy-two.
Oh, boy.
All right. Let me just point out a couple of things that, because the budget, it looks like a regular budget, where there are fringe benefits and all those other things. Well, the City Attorney's Office doesn't get any of that. Those are legacy benefits from two attorneys removed. The City of Marquette doesn't provide us any fringes, no secretarial, no office space, no material or supplies. We provide that all through our office, and our retainer fee supports two attorneys and the two legal assistants who work with us, plus we have eight other lawyers that we can consult with. So, it's, it's, just to assure you, it's not a salary, wish it was, but it's...
If somebody fills in for you, that's what they might go through.
Yeah. It's, it's basically, that's, you know, we're knee-deep in it, serve at the pleasure of the commission, of course. But I'm open for questions. I, I think there's one thing that you might see, that I think not only are our fees in here, but also outside council fees, like Jack Vancouvering, who does the tax tribunals, and Rich Baron, who's the environmental expert working on the Cliffs Dow. And I think that Dennis has reduced his budget this year by, I don't know, seven, eight thousand dollars, something like that. So, it's about half of what it was last year. That's where you'll see a little bit of a decrease this year. And our retainers stayed the same this third year.
Question, yes.
Yes. Ron, I see for court hearings, you've projecting eighteen for fiscal year 2018. What, what do you go to court for? What are, just for people watching to clarify a little bit.
Well, we have, sometimes we have litigation in circuit court, we have district court ordinance hearings, violation hearings. We go to court to, to strike taxes every year that are required by law. And then once in a while, we'll have, you know, lawsuit that, and right now, we're in a Court of Appeals on a tax tribunal case, so there's...
Right.
There's things back and forth, there's no criminal work involved, and very little, you know, it's not like civil jury trial work, but there are cases where they, they file in court, whether it's a zoning case or something like that.
The law challenges.
Right. Exactly.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll do a little bit of a jump to page one-twenty. This is labeled liability insurance. Actually, liability insurance is spread out through the, throughout the city's budget. This is just the area that we really can't pinpoint and charge to any specific area. And it's really kind of held steady. It's usually in the low eighty thousand dollars per year, looking at page, whatever that page is, one-twenty-one. So, really, this is the catch-all, like I said, for liability insurance, that we can't spread out to other areas. Going on to transfers out, page one-twenty-three. I did allude to this a little bit earlier. Actually, if you go to one, page one-twenty-four, this shows the areas that we have to transfer money from the general fund to. A lot of these are debt service funds, which we're required by law to do. But the general fund also supports the activities of the major and local street funds, and also the Lakeview Arena Fund. In the past, the general fund was also supporting the Marina Funds, but both of those are in position to where the past several years, we haven't had to make any transfers to those. That's a good, good news story. As you can see, the transfers out compared to the current budget year is just slightly higher, and that's really due to adding a new debt service fund to fund the 2017 CIP projects. Any questions on transfers out?
Yes. So, if we could get rid of Lakeview Arena, we would be in good shape.
Well, that's one way to look at it. If reductions in major and local street and Lakeview Arena benefits the general fund, because that's us money, the general fund would have to transfer out to support.
Three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
And really, the only time, and we can talk more about that on the John Swinson Day of the budget, but Lakeview Arena really only made money back when the university played hockey there, and there used to be big-ticket concerts going there, like Def Leppard and people like that. Ever since the university left, it's just a losing money proposition. I mean, it still provides a good service for the community, but we, we think we've tightened the belt about as well as we can, and under current conditions, it's just kind of what we're faced with each year.
Well, consider my comment just to commissioners lament.
Understood, believe me, understood. So, now, we'll do another jump to page fourteen. This will cover the debt. This first page, page fourteen, shows all the debt that we currently have on the books. And as you can see, it's very small print, so the more debt we add on, the smaller the print gets. But also, if you look at the next couple of pages, too, page fifteen, it's the exact same debt service schedule, but this is really what the general fund supports. It's a little misleading, because we, when we get into the capital improvement bonds, those are also largely supported by the water sewer and stormwater utilities, usually to the tune of about seventy-five percent of those are supported by water sewer and stormwater utilities. But there's also a general fund component to that. Then the next page is the same debt service schedule, but this shows the non-general fund-supported items, starting with the library, which has a special debt millage that was voted in, brownfield debt, and then the debt contained in our utilities, the water sewer portions. Then the next page after that, I'm sorry, about seventeen, this is the new TLP payment schedule. This is based on the, the project budget. This is how we're going to spread out the debt, the, well, it's not a debt, it's a lease payment, and according to the state, TLP does not count as debt, although when I talk to standard implores each year, they do consider it debt. So, it's kind of a, kind of a weird situation. But each year, this is the lease payments we will start plugging into the budget, with the first payment being due June fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. And as part of the plan that Mike has proposed with the property sales, we do hope to take out two of these bond issues that we showed on page fourteen. That would be the founder's lending debt, which is, it's labeled, does it say, two thousand and three founder's lending, three sixty. So, that's that debt there. Then over towards the middle of the page, it says two thousand and five forest land, three sixty-five. That's that debt, too. So, ideally, if the property sales go through as planned and everything else works out, we'll pay those two off. So, we will free up some space to make the grant larger for next, next year. Are there any questions?
Is this the one that we can, can we use this then for our brownfield reference that we were requesting, previous meetings, so we know when they're going to time out? What you have on here with the different brownfield, the Bariga Brownfield, that one would time out in 2032. Is that what this is, is that what this is showing me?
Yeah, that's when these debts are matured.
Right.
The last payment.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Okay, and that's, that's correct assumption then.
This is the full explanation of it, of what I'm trying to put together for you is to, to sing summary of...
That'd be great.
When they expire, how much the tax, that, that...
Okay. But if, in the meantime, if somebody asks me, you know, if we're talking with NTN and they're talking about something, yeah, cross their eyes like I did, and go get my microscope. Thank you.
So, no further questions, we're already go into administrative services, which is Susan's area, so Susan can...
Back up.
Make her way up. And we'll start with page fifty-nine, which is the city clerk's area.
Good afternoon. Starting on page fifty-nine, under revenues, you'll see a slight increase in, anticipated under the business licenses. That is generally due to a couple new licenses, the outdoor merchandise permit and our non-compliance fees. It was kind of surprising this year when we put that ordinance into place, that we really didn't have to chase anyone down for weeks or months, because if they thought they would be fined, they just paid up. We had one business that their permit fee was fifty dollars, and they ended up paying an additional fine of fifty dollars because they didn't comply. Kind of got their attention, so I appreciate that we could do that kind of follow-up, because it really helped staff time. It really cuts into staff time when we're chasing down businesses. So, that was interesting. We did include a couple other fees, hotel motel increased, five dollars here, five dollars there, just to be right up with the cost of doing business. Authorized positions, myself, my deputy and administrative assistant, we're still at the three-year mark, so we're at step increases, which will end next year, basically. Program stats are pretty consistent. We had a lot more contracts this year and a lot more deeds and easements recorded due to all the property changes in the city. Any questions on page fifty-nine? I kind of touched on the business license, non-compliance fees, any of the changes highlighted, if you have questions on any of those, but they're pretty self-explanatory.
Page sixty.
Thank you.
Chris, do you find that people actually are, the mobile, the mobile food vending non-compliance fine, that, that's a large fine, do, have you run into people not complying as far as the mobile trucks?
Actually, no. There is a lot involved.
I saw that you sent NA, so, for as far as like getting fees, I'm just...
There is a lot involved, staff time, paperwork, other departments involved. So, pretty much, these vendors get all their ducks in a row, and being that the fine is higher than their fee, that also gets their attention, so they're, they're pretty compliant. And we're hoping, you know, to see a few more in town. Page sixty-one. Again, we would start at two-one-five-seven-two-seven, our office supplies. That is pretty consistent, went up just a small amount. That includes recording fees for our legal documents. We notify people of their non-compliance by certified mailing. And just general supplies in the office. Our, our eight oh one is the big increase this year, and basically, that's due to codifying the land development code, should that go through. There'll be public hearings involved, there'll be codifications. We expect it to be pretty, a pretty hefty cost. Nine hundred, or, excuse me, eight-six-five, training, state of Michigan certification, that's pretty consistent. Nine hundred, printing and publishing, that's city-related notices. Cost increases, depending on how many ordinances we adopt throughout the year, that all, that all adds up. Nine-four-five is our equipment rental charges, as we do the annual R2D2, which is the certified destruction of city documents each year. So, that's in our budget. Any questions on that? We have a pretty clean budget. If we could go to elections, page sixty-eight. Under revenue, this is generally our voter lists, anybody that would come in with a voter list and a reimbursement fund in a presidential year, or if one of the parties call a special election, they reimburse us. So, that's about the only time you'd see fees, which you see back in fourteen, sixteen. That was the high-dollar amount, when one of the parties had to reimburse, or for a presidential primary, which we'll see in 2020. Authorized positions, our election inspectors, our election office help, chairs, vice chairs, and receiving boards. Fairly consistent. We did add a counting board as of August, which we will continue. Due to the new equipment, it was basically impossible to process the absentee ballots in the precincts, as we had done for years. And the machines are slower, so I took that factor out of the precinct, and we now have a counting board that follows specific rules, they're sequestered away, and that's all they do all day, is process absentee ballots. It's quite interesting, but in the end, it's efficient. So, we will, we basically have six members on the counting board, where we would normally have an additional two people per precinct. Now, we just reduced that to six. So, it's sort of a cost-saving measure. In the long run, I think it'll be well worth its time. Any questions? Program statistics, pretty consistent. We'll see an increase again in 2020. You'll see in even year and presidential years, our numbers will increase, and then basically due to a student population decrease after that time. Page sixty-nine, now sixty-nine. We began at seven forty, operating supplies. That is, supplies needed for the election, everything down from pencils and pens that you would use in the precinct to keeping our workers happy. Eight oh one, we reduced just a little bit, anticipating just a few changes. We do still... We do still have to pay for coding of the tabulators, which increased to twenty-three hundred per election. And that's due, again, to the new equipment. I've mentioned the AB counting board. Other than that, the rest of these fees are pretty, pretty consistent, status quo. Questions there?
Okay, we're ready to go on to HR's, page seventy-four, which is Susan.
For revenues, what you see under fees is is for the COBRA fees, when an employee leaves the city, if they want to continue their health insurance with the city, that is what COBRA is. They pay the full amount of the health insurance plus a two percent administrative fee, as designated by the law. So that two percent is if anybody does elect COBRA, then we collect two percent of the fees. It's really hard to determine who will or will not leave the city and who will need COBRA, so it's just a shot in the dark, it's a guess. Fixed charges, I think Gary explained what those were. Reimbursements, that's, every once in a while, we have four-fifty-seven plans, and they will close out an account, or they'll there'll be some type of court settlement, and they'll send us back a check for fifty dollars. And rather than trying to split that fifty dollars up amongst all the participants, we throw it in reimbursements. There are three positions, myself, my payroll clerk, and our HR benefits coordinator. The statistics are shown below, we're anticipating one additional position is next year, if that's approved in the budget. The health insurance costs, retiree health insurance, you'll note, has gone down. MERS has gone down, or gone up a little bit, I'm sorry. Police fire, at the time that we put the fact sheets together, we did not have the valuation from the actuaries. We have since gotten it, and that amount is actually one million, six-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty. No questions, I'll go on to page seventy-six. No, question?
Just curious, I see you're gonna add one full-time. It's a pretty good bump, and the seasonal employees as well?
The seasonal is for, and that may have changed as well, we were having more lifeguards with the additional beaches, but I believe since this was published, they've been cutting some of the lifeguards, is that correct? No?
Correct, the South Beach lifeguards were taken out.
So actually, at the time we put this together, we thought we were going to be guarding South Beach as well, but now that has been cut.
Thanks.
Any other questions? On the page seventy-six, HR budget, the only thing I would point out is in account seven-ten, we had budgeted initially for bonuses. That amount has been cut, that was twenty-five thousand, that's been removed from the budget to help balance. Then down to office supplies, not really any change, this is, you know, copiers, post, or copiers, paper, general office supplies. Postage has remained pretty static. Professional contractual, we did bump up a little bit this year. We've been very fortunate not to have any arbitrations, but we came close last year to, to going to arbitration, and when we saw what the going rate is for an arbitration, I was kind of shocked, it's really gone up quite a lot. It would have cost us six thousand dollars, and if we would have lost, we would have had to pay the other side's fee, so that would have been twelve thousand dollars. So I'd been only budgeting about six thousand dollars for a possible arbitration, I've had to double that, based on what we determined. Luckily, we didn't end up going to arbitration, we settled, but it is very expensive. Local training managerial, that is the city's membership fee to NMSA. So the city, I pay that out of my budget for the entire city, and that way, when people go to the city, they're only paying twenty-five dollars per training. And that usually includes lunch, refreshments, and supplies for the training class. Physicals and drug screens, we do a pre-employment physical for all new hires. Employees in public works that need to have their commercial license, the DOT requires an additional physical on top of that. So that is the, the cost for the physicals, I'm, there are seventeen full-time employees that are eligible to retire next year, doesn't mean they will, but I budget, assuming that they all could leave, and we would have to replace them with new hires. Transportation is what we use to cover the cost of travel to the MERS conference, and for NMSA trainings for my staff, or BSNA trainings. Membership fees is professional, human resource organizations, and the UP Labor Management Council. And the employee assistance program, it's a thirty-five dollar charge per employee to provide counseling and referral services for our employees and their dependents and family members. Any questions?
Just one. The twenty-five thousand performance pay, is that just for non-union?
Yes.
Is that management?
That was.
If the budget works out, would that, would you reinstate that? Is that a Prince Charming?
It is on the Prince Charming list.
Yes. Is it a high priority Prince Charming, or a low priority?
It was probably towards the middle, not the highest priority, but it's on the list.
Thank you.
Okay, next, if we could go one to Todd's area, the PEG channel and tech services, so page one forty-six.
Can you talk about that?
Okay, so I guess the, the biggest item for PEG this year was, we were able to reach an agreement for some extra funding, so we'll be able to continue to fund the channel, and also, we have the video equipment, we've already replaced the audio equipment this year, you're aware of that, but the video equipment, that lease is due in the spring of next year. And so we, we will be receiving enough funds to be, actually be able to afford to replace the video equipment, so we'll be doing that in the spring, that's, that's kind of the big thing here. I don't know if you have any questions about the statistics. There were some changes in percentages of what was rebroadcast this year. I think the biggest thing we have with the programming statistics is we just don't have enough, either free or, you know, public access programming to, to play on the channel, we need to look into that, do some research and find more. We need, we want to spend a little bit more time doing that, staff, this year's been, we've been extremely busy with projects, probably the busiest year since I've been here. So we haven't gotten to this, but this is something that we want to look at, as things kind of slow down here in the fall, we'll try to improve our programming. We also had, a few years ago, kicked around the idea, and I'd like to introduce it again, where we would like to maybe do a commissioner minute, or mayor's minute, or something, where we do a quick interview, could even do it with department heads. Just do short interviews on hot topics of the time, and we could rebroadcast those for a, a period of time, create some of our own content. Things that the residents want to know, and the commission or the department heads could provide, that would help with content as well.
Manager minute.
Yep, manager's minute.
I think this is great, I just wonder how many people actually watch the channel, and that's not any fault of your own. I know we do it on YouTube as well for the meetings. So I don't know, it's just, I know you're probably aware of that, but just something to.
It's three, three people watch the channel.
We've asked Charter for that information, and they've not been willing to share it.
And we paid twenty-three thousand dollars for three people to watch it, are we required by law to have this channel?
That was just a joke, we, we don't know how many.
He's not telling me it's a joke.
I don't have the statistics.
Just seems like a lot of money to pay, and.
Should check it out.
We.
I don't have cable.
Ooh. We do get, we do get calls, sometimes people asking about content they've seen, or, or not seen, when things aren't getting rebroadcast, we'll get a call once in a while. So there are people that use the channel, I don't have a number how many.
It's a good question.
And you've asked, and they.
We've asked Charter, and they will not give us.
Well, yeah, because they don't want us to stop broadcasting.
My guess is they don't actually have that information.
Can't we just move to YouTube only? That's my, that's my preference, but I know that doesn't cover everyone.
You have to keep in mind that a large part of this community is like old, older.
But even they probably don't watch this.
Well, they do, it's surprising how many contacts we get from people
Good, I'm glad.
Who watch the meetings, I mean, it's, I think over a transitional period of time, maybe generations, that it would change to just YouTube, and right now, we're trying to hit everybody, every, every level, from computer YouTube users, to just regular TV users, to non-cable users, so it's really, it's been surprising to me how many people actually watch the meetings. I, I mean, there's maybe even a few watching this meeting.
Hello?
Take that one step further, Mike, people not only in the city of Marquette, but people all around the county, watch the meeting. Because I get, I do get feedback in Ishpeming, I get feedback in Gwin, different places that I travel, and I actually, I'm actually recognized, and this, the only way they really could, is by watching the meetings.
But I think a lot of the ones that I hear about anyway, watch it on YouTube, either live or, so it's hard to tell the source, but I wonder what other municipalities do, do they broadcast?
Well, it's interesting, we've had a couple communities come and approach us, because at one time Charter broadcast for the communities and provided the equipment, and they've now stopped that completely, so communities have come to us and said, can you do it? And it's like, well, we can't really, we can rebroadcast your meetings for you, but we can't go and film your, your meetings live and, and send them. So, a lot of communities have probably stopped, or they're not doing live broadcasts, they're filming and then running it on YouTube, or playing it. And some of them have lost their channels, too. Interesting. We're one of the few channels, and we've, we've been approached by a couple, we've offered to, to rebroadcast their meetings for them, if they would like. Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, two quick things if I can, I suspect, I believe, we are the only broadcast mission meeting, meeting, public meeting in the county. I know nobody else who broadcasts, and I do know.
Is the county doing?
Township does.
Marquette Township?
Township does a rebroadcast, that's all rebroadcast. But I, I suspect, suspect heck, I know that there's people that come here for public comment, just because we are a live broadcast medium. It has nothing to do with the city, but they're gonna get their minute in fame, and they're gonna come here and get that minute, or three minutes, or twelve minutes.
Or twelve.
Whatever they can cage. The second point, why not try and engage Northern Michigan University's broadcast school about doing the interviews that you're talking about?
We have, actually.
Class project, they also do a lot of local stuff around the community as class projects, all of which now can be an outlet, we can be an outlet for their product. So, ten cents worth, it's a good point.
We have approached them, but so far, they have not been interested. We've asked them if they would send their broadcasting students.
That's too bad.
Now, we could try again, I mean, it's been a couple years, we could certainly.
Keep trying, because it comes down to the individual professor, not, not really the department. And stay away from the television side of it, because they're not gonna do anything without being paid.
True.
The, the intellectual side, the training side, I think is a different story, again, ten cents worth, thank you.
Well, I can add five cents to that, you might consult with Marquette High School also, because they have a pretty good broadcasting program. And there's quite a few people that are getting involved in that, and that, that might be a mutually beneficial situation.
Right, checking the high school. Use your pole.
To my knowledge, they're quite busy in a lot of projects right now, but it is something to look into.
Looking at it next year.
All right, now page one forty-seven?
Are we headed?
Are we done, we're done with the PEG fund, so we're moving on to the.
Well, no, we'll do second page of PEG, the one forty-seven. Actual expenditures.
I have it.
Okay. All the revenues we get from Charter for this account can only be spent on the broadcasting. So we can't use it for anything, we can't even use it to pay an employee to do the actual broadcasting, I don't know how to do that, but we can use it to buy equipment and things like that, to broadcast, so it's, kind of funds itself.
Well, yeah, there's not much else to say about that, basically, the money comes in, goes out for equipment, and I don't really have anything else to add unless you do. Do you have any questions about, any more questions about the channel?
Yeah, let's go back to that, I'm sorry, just looking at it again. From walk me through that, and why I'm, I'm having trouble understanding what the fiscal year two thousand nineteen requested number versus the massive decrease from the, or the increase, I guess, from the two thousand eighteen.
Under revenues, is that what you're looking at?
TV cable franchise.
Under the revenues, that's the, when the cable franchise agreement came up for renewal last year.
Yeah.
Part of that included the PEG fees, we used to get only point-two-five percent.
Okay.
And we negotiated an increase up to point-four-seven-five percent.
Oh, okay.
So instead of seeing twelve thousand dollars in revenues, we're hoping to see nineteen to twenty thousand, depending on how many cable subscribers there are.
Well, wouldn't that be nice? Thank you.
Excuse me, just, I don't know if it was mentioned, but it may be, and I miss it, but the PEG fee is, is in addition to the consumer bill. So in other words, whatever we negotiate with, with Charter, they add that amount to the bill, and if you look at your Charter bill, if you have Charter, you'll see a certain line, just for that percentage, so it's, it's one of those things where, where Susan did a nice job negotiating it, because Charter is very sensitive about their bills and how they appear to the public, and any extra fee is often questioned, and you know, I think we're allowed, what, up to five percent?
Three percent. Otherwise, going for three, and I ended up with point-four-seven-five, but that's.
So.
Yeah, double what we were getting before.
Yeah, so, anyway, so if you see it on your bill, that's for us, don't call and complain about it. Too late.
Okay, page two, two twenty-six.
Okay. So, basically, our positions have changed, that's kind of, I guess, the most dramatic part here. Our director retired, and so the salary is a good drop there for the next several years. We hired a new network specialist, and so the previous network specialist had been here a decade, and so that salary is back to kind of the step, annual steps. We had, we had an excellent network specialist here. But he's moved on. So we're, we're actually gonna save quite a bit in salary for the next several years, which is, is a benefit. When you go down, if there aren't any questions about that, if you go down to online auction, these statistics are really, they're, they're shown under the IT budget, but this is citywide, so this never, doesn't reflect specifically what the IT department is auctioning, but what we've auctioned as a city. Help desk calls really haven't changed our last several years, we're just, we use a ticket. Help desk calls really haven't changed over the last several years. We're just, we use a ticketing system. We track our tickets and it stays pretty steady. The website actually changed quite a bit. If you look at the statistics, total views on the homepage has dropped quite a bit. And average, average time on the site is still there in the same, kind of the same average. And we, we refreshed or redesigned the website. And what we feel is that because there's more information on the homepage, that people are going there and getting a lot of information, remaining there longer and not, not necessarily clicking back and forth. And so we kind of see that as a positive.
Just on the, on the auctions, if I could, is that all assets, city assets that we're talking motor pool, all that stuff?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. That's what I see when I'm on there. Thanks.
Proposed fees, it's not a whole lot in the IT department. We do have the property lookup. Our proposed fee schedule and then video recording after hours. If there's a group that wants to use the commission chambers for a meeting and have it recorded, we have a fee structure for that.
No questions?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, actually, one person or one group that actually did that.
We've done that before, yeah. It doesn't happen very often, but it's nice to be prepared.
Those legal women voters things, they record themselves or you guys record it or?
Those are fees for us to record those meetings for other groups.
That's what I thought, because I know when, when like we did like the legal, there's like commission forms. Everybody's running, is that, whether this is recorded or posted later, is that recorded by you or is that recorded by them or?
This last one, we didn't record it.
You guys do that?
Uh, which one? I'm sorry.
The legal woman voters?
The last, the last one, like recorded stock.
Yeah, they, they recorded their own.
They recorded themselves, gotcha.
But we have in the past used our own equipment, recorded. So I guess I'll just hit a couple highlights here and then see if you have any questions on... I'll go through what some of the items that have changed. The budget this year really is less than $20,000 higher than last year. A lot of things have actually gone down. There were a lot of things that we requested last year that we were able to purchase or lease and implement. The IT department right now is, I think, sitting very strongly as far as our equipment, disaster recovery. We're in a really good position. A lot of that has to do with the, the really hard work done by Mr. Fredrickson before he retired. So I want to just take a minute and, and send kind of a thank you over the wire to one of the people that's watching this channel. Great work there. So some of the things that have changed under office supplies, it's a small amount, but it, it looks large because it's a 50% increase. I've increased office supplies because we, we are now going to be charging our postage out of that account. We have a new employee. And there just been with, with the rollout and with other things going on, there's just been a few incidentals that pop up here and there. So I, we, we kind of went, we used, I think, all that money this year and I think we're going to need a little bit more, so I bumped that up. But again, it's, it's a relatively small amount. Operating supplies actually went down this year, 28%. I did add some things into that. I'm going to buy some secondary backup drives because they're end of life and we need to, to make sure that we have enough protection there and they're due for replacement. But there were a few items that we purchased last year that we didn't have to include and so overall, our operating supplies has come down. If you look at 801, professional and contractual, that's gone up considerably. We do have a new fuel system at the new building. IT has incorporated that. So that fuel system, there's both hardware and software support. And I've also increased network support. Two years ago, we had budgeted $10,000 in network support. Last year, we were able to drop it down to five, but we ran into some issues first of this year and we ended up using that. And with just the, the nature of our work and what we, the projects that have increased and what we have going on this year, I felt like it was pertinent to increase that to make sure we would be able to cover all of our network costs. So that's where you're going to see the increase for professional contractual. Also, the cost of network support had gone up from an average of $55 to $75 an hour. So that's also reflected in that increase. If there aren't any questions on that, the next one I would have you look at is communications. That hasn't increased much, less than 5%. But what's going on in communications is we're actually getting rid of the old pots lines. But as we do that, we're increasing more and more cellular technology. And so there's kind of a wash there. But overall, we are increasing in cell phone usage. Tablets have increased for some of the projects that we have. And security alarms. We've been installing new security alarms and new building, seasonal sites, things like that. So tho- those security alarms that use cell technology or even Midwest Security or another company like that that would be, we would be paying a monthly fee for service, monitoring or whatever that service is. That all falls under communications and so it didn't go up much, but it remains steady. The next one would be items 865, conferences and training. We increased that 28%. Really, we, we increased it $1,500. And what's going on there is we have quite a bit of new equipment, new software, and we have a new employee. And we need to make sure that we're up to speed on everything going on. And so we want to make sure that our employees not only get the training they need, but we're constantly looking at ways to improve what we're, the equipment we're using, the software we're using, ways to save money. And so we like to, when it's pertinent, we like to send our staff to seminars to keep abreast of what's going on in the industry. We don't want to fall behind. And that, that seems like one of the best ways to do it is to get them out and get them talking to the vendors, get them looking at, you know, touching, feeling and seeing what's going on in the industry. If we look at 930, repairs and maintenance, we've increased that. The largest part of that increase, I would attribute to the, the maintenance of the cameras downtown. We've been increasing the cameras downtown. To, up to now, DDA has been purchasing those cameras. P, the PD and the DDA kind of share those cameras. The IT department, up to this point, has been responsible for maintaining those. And there's been a lot of breakage or failure that we've, we've found this year. A lot of it has to do probably with the harsh weather conditions, to be honest. So we've had to increase that budget just to, to keep up with, that's some of the equipment. If there aren't any questions there, the next increase is software. I think overall, software kind of increases a little bit each year because we're trying to manage the city with, with fewer employees, kind of maintain status quo, but there's constantly new projects, new things going on. And so we use software to try to help gain an advantage to, to meet the needs of the city. Another item that was, a large ticket item actually that was added to software is a new citation management system. And that's a fairly large ticket item. We're looking at getting that replaced this year. We're hoping that will also generate new revenue, increased revenue. So I'm happy to talk more about software if anyone has questions.
Yeah, you think, I know it's probably a question for John, but anything about, it's on like street camera down by Marina Center, Marina, Matson Park area? Because there's no, you know, they store boats, but we've heard complaints about for people, you know, possibly going after boats. Maybe get more revenue for the city if you put a little camera there saying, you know, monitored by city, you know, Blake's Department or something like that. Then we, then, or just put a sign up there saying, you know, put a fake camera up there or something, you know? Just to say it's monitored, but you know?
Yeah.
Something to look at, you know, it's probably a question for John, you know, getting his budget, but you know, something you guys look at. Maybe putting, how expensive are those cameras? Are they expensive or?
They are expensive.
Gotcha.
They're very expensive, but you, we only see the, the amount of cameras growing. It's not going to shrink. It's been fairly new. It's been just in that last handful of years that we started using cameras downtown. And once you start, you, you never go back. It'll just continue to increase. The police have gained a great benefit from it as well as the DDA. We have run fiber to certain areas just so we could have cameras. We ran fiber to the lighthouses. And we have fiber at the Marina. We'll, we'll just continue, I, I think we'll just continue to expand. So that's why you're going to see the budget for repair and maintenance kind of creep up as we do that.
It totally could be, you know, for travel Marquette, maybe it could be, it could be police factor, you know, security. It also could be tourism thing, you know, who knows? They're both things.
We, we have vandalism in certain parts of the city and we've been looking at targeting those areas as well. We do have plans to install some new cameras coming up this year.
Todd, I think it just, it needs to be mentioned, just a comment, but when you look at protecting the city's information, it's, it's a daily battle, almost an hourly battle, and you guys are doing a good job of it. With all the personal information that people, we have here for all the residents of the city, it's crucial that you protect it. People are, all over the world are trying to raid that information.
Daily, yeah.
And that's something I think that people need to understand. It's, it's a push. And when you look at some of the software charges, I think that's part of that.
Yeah, it certainly is, yeah. We have to, in fact, that's a large part of it. And we're constantly, in fact, we, I don't know how to put this. We have so much going on right now that with our limited staff, if, if we didn't have the software and the tools to... What's the term I want to use?
Combat?
Well, yeah, but...
To assist us in, in making sure that we are as secure as we can be.
Yeah, I'm trying to also say, my brain's melted right now. I, I made the mistake of listening to everybody else first.
Well, and I think part of it is, you know, people have a lot of personal computers and they use them every day, but they don't realize the assault on information that's happening daily, especially on a municipal level. You don't, you don't see it at, at home like you do here.
We've also, that's why we're training employees too, constantly, and new employees as they come in so they can hopefully not fall for phishing scams and, you know, click on email attachments that they shouldn't and, yeah.
We, we have been, automating is the word I was looking for. I don't know why you couldn't think of it. When I started here, we did so many things manually and you just, we're to a point, we've grown so much. There's so many, each department, every year expands how much IT needs they have. And quite frankly, with the staff we have, we couldn't keep up if we didn't automate. So we have, we have really good technical staff that have found ways to get a lot of our processes, our daily processes automated. But even though it gets automated, you still have to monitor, maintain, make sure those are working and, and when they break, fix them. So that's part of it as well as, and, and security is all part of that too, our firewalls and...
Yeah, and one more thing to talk about too. I think when Johnson Controls is fin- finished, you're going to have more computer burden, so to speak, with different things that are going on, that are going, as you're talking about, things that are manual now that are going to be automated.
We've already gotten to that point where we've installed the HVAC servers, for example, and, and the doors, the security servers. And those things are, they're now in place and being utilized. So we're already maintaining those as well. So it's a lot of, it's a lot. We, we right now have, I would say, two of the best technical staff in the city. They're Mike Adams and Max Janau. They do an excellent job. We're lucky to have them.
Okay. Todd, one last question. When was the last time we've had a forensic analysis of IT?
Yeah, I, it's, it's been a lot longer than I can remember.
I mean, last time somebody was knocking on the outside, every department trying to get in and see what they can do.
About eight years ago. About eight years ago.
I think it's about time we look at seriously scheduling one?
Yeah.
We can, we can say all the good words in the world, but if we, if, if the knock-knock doesn't get repulsed, we lose.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's a great idea. There's a pretty high cost to that, but I'd be willing to look into it for you. I mean, we can do that.
I mean, I'm looking at the high cost of having a, having a breach.
Yeah, correct.
And if you read the magazines and you read the government journals and the, you know, the tech stuff, you see every city that's being knocked down. I mean, the entire city of Atlanta goes down. As for one. What, they captured a state too, I think, somewhere along the line here a few months ago.
Well, it's, it's a great point. The amount of money you spend for a test is minimal compared to what it would take to fix a breach. So I like the idea as well.
If you're asking me to look into that and come back to the commission with a number, it'd be helpful to do that, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I would support that.
Look in the tug area, how much it is.
Okay, moving on.
Okay, that concludes the administrative services area. So we're ready to get into the fire with Chief Ian, the fire chief, page 87.
About time. The city's been endangered since you've been here. By heaven, blink in the same room, the city's in danger.
Just past 5, I'll say good evening to the commissioner. First page is going to be 87, fact sheets under revenue, really for fire. The biggest variable and the largest impact for revenues is state protection of, I'm sorry, fire protection of state facilities, revenue sharing for the fire department. If you look back over the years, it fluctuates up and down. So that number of 175,000 is a guess based off of what we got this year. It could be lower, it could be higher. That's really the, the largest impact to that. If there's no questions there, next page is 88 and 89 are program statistics. Because it is two pages worth, if you have specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We are at approximately, both annually and fiscally, up to around 2,200 runs per year for emergency runs. If there aren't any questions there, next page 90 is the proposed fee schedule. As I believe all the other departments did, you're looking at the per hour charge of 121 going up to 123 is a 2% increase for wages contractually. The largest difference on this one, or the, the biggest difference is going to be under the rental property overcapacity violations. That is a $1,000 citation. That has been previously adopted by the commission earlier this year. And that's the majority of the changes here. Any questions? Okay, next page 91, the fire budget 336. Major changes here, 740 line item, operating supplies. We do have money in here for turnout gear, which is our protective jacket and pants, replacement of those, helmets, SCBA or self-contained breathing apparatus bottles, and also hydrostatic testing of those. Target solution software, which is a training software, basically looking to increase efficiency there. And also, it saves us money on overtime because then we don't have our guys coming in. This is all web-based and they have all the content that is, like for the medical side of it. It's all set up to the county, state and federal protocols so that we don't have to have our guys come in on overtime on their off days to teach the guys this stuff. It'll all be web-based. They can do it as time allows. And again, because we have the increased run volume, it makes it a lot easier to get that training in. The way we're doing it right now with the medical side of the training, they have to set the course, set the dates and set the times 30 days in advance. If they get a medical call or any other call, they have to scrap it and start over 30 days out and do it again. So this way, it's a lot more efficient. The guys can get it in when they have time to do it. And then all they have to, all we have to do and pay for, for an instructor is the hands-on time, not the classroom lecture portion of it. And then lastly, hiring a rescue equipment. It's a small amount of equipment, but it was in there, so I figured I'd put that in. That should bring us over last year's budget and this year's budget for operating supplies. That should baseline us for equipment needs. There was quite a bit of equipment that was at end of service life that needed to be replaced. And this will bring us up to par for the foreseeable future for quite a few years. The next one would be 775, which is repair and maintenance of facilities. The major things, additions there for this year are some minor furniture replacement for some furniture that's over 30 years old. Mattresses, again, we work 24-hour shifts there. The mattresses are over 10 years old. I think they're pushing 13 years old. They're broken down. The guys aren't sleeping well. They're past due to be replaced. And then a single refrigerator for the number one station, it's falling apart. And again, it's over a decade old. 801, professional and contractual, the change there is for OSHA mandated physicals. This was something that we weren't conducting that we found out we were supposed to be. Eight oh one, professional and contractual. The change there is for OSHA mandated physicals. This was something that we weren't conducting, that we found out we were supposed to be, and that's about a fifteen hundred dollar increase. I spoke with the city physician, Dr. Rose's office, and they gave me about that price for the amount of firefighters they think are gonna have to go through that physical. It all depends on how they fill out a medical questionnaire every year. We have to do what's called fit testing for OSHA, for the SCBAs, to be, make sure their masks fit, and that's part of that. We didn't realize we weren't meeting the, the OSHA standard on that. So that's what that is. The last thing is going to be eight fifty, which is communications. They, we're replacing the pots, lines, the hard lines from AT&T for our antennas that cover the city with two fiber optic. That's about a twelve thousand dollar cost. Todd can probably speak to that better than I could, that's a little over my head. And then also our stage and pa- sta- station paging equipment is past its useful life. That is something that needs to get replaced, it's a little over two thousand dollars, and that's the actual alerting that we get when there's a, an emergency from central dispatch. That, that actual physical equipment needs to be replaced. Any questions?
Is that smart, your stuff's all going, your tablets all hooked up, the smart nine-one-one stuff, where you get all the information on your tablets, so, you know, you go into somewhere and you're looking at something, you get all the information basically?
Unfortunately, that isn't set up yet, but we're kinda waiting on central dispatch. We have all the, all of the equipment and software to do that, which is what we did this last, this fiscal year. We're, we're up and running with that, and we're waiting on some technical difficulties with central dispatch and, and some of their software programs and their providers that have to. I, I'm envisioning, I'm hoping within the next six months, we should be live using computer-aided dispatching also.
On the other, Gary, do that for you today?
Exactly. Question, Mike?
Yeah, just a, just a comment, Ian, when you talk about training, and I'm very familiar with fit testing, and one thing that I think should be mentioned is that in order for your, some of your staff to, to be able to do those fit testing, they have to be trained.
Correct.
So there's train, the trainers involved with this as well. But to have those trainers on your staff also saves money, so it's a great investment. Train the people on your staff to be able to do that training, you don't have to send out or hire out for that. And it's, it's a specific type of training, you have to have the credentials to do it. It's not something that just anybody, anybody can do.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll move on to the rental code enforcement, which is the three-seventy-one budget, page ninety-two. Under revenues, the code registration is just what it says. When people register their apartments, that's the fee they pay to get those registered. Rental compliance is the inspections, and then obviously the fines of the citations. Any questions there?
Yeah. The SRTs are all within that then?
Correct. Short-term rentals and long-term rentals are all included in that.
How are we, how is, how's that going? I'll talk to you about it later.
It's going well. We're well under the two-hundred-and-fifty cap though for the short-term rentals still.
Okay. Well, under, well, under the cap you said?
Correct. Uh, let's see. If there's any questions under program statistics, those are basically unchanged year to year. Page ninety-three, there really aren't any changes to the program this year. The budget is substantially similar to, similar to last year. If there's any questions there, I'd be happy to answer them. Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to the waterfront safety budget, seven-seventy-seven, page one-fourteen. There is, there really is no revenue to this program. We don't charge anything out, so. There is a change between this fact sheet and the budget under authorized positions that was hit on a little bit earlier. The wages for the lifeguards, where it says thirty lifeguards, we're employing about twenty-four this year because we just didn't have the staffing to staff all the beaches, so we closed South Beach to, not closed it, but we, it was unguarded this year. We did look at that for next year and seeing that we're probably gonna run into the same problem with getting enough trained lifeguards in the city, even with increasing their pay, things like that, we didn't get a huge response. We're looking at doing the same thing next year, is not guarding South Beach, and that's gonna save about twenty thousand dollars on that for fiscal year nineteen on wages for lifeguards.
Who are you paying your lifeguards?
I'm sorry?
How much are you paying them, lifeguards?
Uh, entry-level lifeguards, I believe it, are about ten sixty an hour.
That's almost minimum, huh? I don't even know what minimum is anymore. It just seems a shame that you can't have lifeguards on South Beach. You just, it's a matter of, I guess the kids don't wanna do it, or maybe if you raise the wage, maybe they will.
We, yeah, we have tried raising the wages over the last two summers. It, we haven't really had any increase. It takes about thirty to thirty-two guards to do all the beaches. We generally get twenty-four, twenty-five. And that's, you know, we were hoping that it would, we could get that up, but we just can't find enough guards. It's just a staffing shortage. It's a great job, it pays well for, you know, compared to a lot of jobs. We start all the way down, we hire all the way down to fifteen-year-olds. It's a great first job, I would think. It pays well, but we're, we get what we get, and that's where we were at for the last two years, so I really can't try and budget for thirty next year, 'cause I'm probably not gonna get it.
Can you get more, you know, how, how can you get more kids? That's the, that's the question.
Yeah, we're, we're already providing free training. It, it costs a lot of money. We, with overtime costs and pool costs, it costs us about six thousand dollars a year to train the ones that we do get. And even with that, without charging any money, we're still not getting people signing up.
Pretty sad, pretty sad.
It's just, honestly, I think it's a labor market thing. I mean, even at that age, from fifteen to twen- early twenties, there's so many jobs available. That's the only thing I can come up with, honestly. Although we are trying to increase it. You know, generally, we've had twenty-four every year, but with Clark Park opening last year, that's where the increase was, and we're just not seeing people, you know, wanting to do that above and beyond the twenty-four that we normally get.
Okay, just a, something of note. I think it was this past week, they just put thirty kids, they filled a class of first aid class at the hospital. And I'm not sure, I know the age group there was, you know, youth. So that was exciting. I immediately thought of, you know, where are these kids gonna be utilizing that, whether it's at summer camp or on our beaches potentially, or what, things along those lines. But certainly a, a resource to potentially tap there, or even knowing the, the swim team and whatnot, the crews that go there, to say, hey, who's, give me those fifteen, sixteen-year-old kids that wanna, wanna do that. But I was excited to hear that they had a full class at, at U.P. Health System here, Marquette, for that, that life-saving course last week.
And then at the bottom of that page, and also the next page, one-fifteen, in the program statistics, basically on attendance at the beaches. If there's any questions, I can answer on that also.
Ian, question?
Yes.
Not, I'm gonna use the word rescue, and, and very loosely. How many times during the summer do the lifeguards assist folks at the beach?
It's variable. Fortunately, we haven't had any major rescues that, obviously, we haven't had any fatalities since twenty-ten.
No, I mean, just people in trouble or people that might be-
People in trouble. Honestly, I'd, I would have to look. We did, we used to include interdictions with the jet ski, you know, if they had to go, you know, tell people not to swim to the rocks, or to, you know, to picnic rocks, things like that.
That would be an interesting stat to see.
Honestly, this year, I haven't heard of very many. I'd have to check whether they had lifeguard, but I believe there's only been a couple.
Okay. Now, how about interdictions like that from the fire department side, non-beach-driven? In other words, how many times in the season have you guys deployed on, on what substantially was a water-
Actually, just one second, I got that number under our-
The sheriff of the coast guard.
Runs here.
Now, the sheriff's always gonna be there to get his vote, but I mean, these guys are gonna do the work.
Again, not very many. I, I'd have to look and see, but we're only talking a couple a year usually. Some of the ones that we, that we have, we just had one today. It's not general, I wouldn't consider it waterfront, but we, like, we had someone fall off some of the cliffs out at the island today. They end up by the water, you know. Sometimes that ends up being a water rescue, depending on where they go. We really haven't had any this year. We had maybe one or two.
I mean, every one is critical, and I'm not trying to come up with a number-
It really depends on the year or two.
Okay. Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, if there's no other questions on that, last page is one-sixteen. Under seven oh two again, you'll notice a difference from fiscal year twenty-eighteen to twenty-nineteen on the wages. That is again, from not guarding South Beach, that reduction. Beyond that, all of the line items are substantially similar from last year. There haven't been any changes.
Okay.
Any other questions on all three budgets? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And last but not least, we're getting there. Police Chief Blake to present the police department budget, starting page eighty-two.
Having a hard enough time just laying awake about this. You guys need a quick break at all, or?
They're gonna be that long?
No.
Hello, you be, the city's in danger, do you need anything here?
Last, make it quick.
Thank you, we're typing here.
We're gonna start on page eighty-two, our fact sheet. You'll start with the revenue as- aspects of it. You'll see the wide variety of revenue kind of sources that we utilize at the Marquette Police Department. Couple of examples would be snowmobile grant we get from the DNR to help fund overtime costs associated with snowmobile patrol. We do get money from the LCC, the Liquor Control Commission, to do property inspections at various establishments throughout the city on random, on a random basis. Some of the county contract PBT fees we receive for doing morning PBTs at our office for the county. We also generate revenue for doing PBTs for other agencies in other areas throughout the state of Michigan, so. Some of our parking citations, I know that was mentioned earlier, we do generate some revenue through those, not only the winter parking bans, but also the meters. We do rent a portion of the city hall to the upset office, which is our drug unit throughout Marquette County and the Upper Peninsula, and that generates a, a portion of revenue. That's also a benefit for us because we have federal agents that are here in our city hall that we do benefit from. A perfect example would be we received a recording device from the ATF in our office at, at no charge. Couple other things we do receive as far as the revenues go would be about fifteen thousand dollars from the MAPS School District to help fund overtime costs for our youth services officer. And we also receive a, a grant from the Kaufman Foundation for about ten thousand dollars to also offset costs and allow us to put an officer in the schools full-time. Which, by the way, is the only officer in Marquette County that we were able to do that, so. Are there any questions as far as that section? Okay. Obviously, you see our authorized positions. We are finally at a full staff the first time in probably almost a year, just because of retirements and having to offset costs as far as filling those positions. Right down to our parking enforcement officer. So we're at a full staff right now, which is thirty-nine full-time, thirty-four sworn police officers, and then five support staff. Any questions on the authorized positions? Program statistics, some highlights here. We do have one officer that's assigned to the Upper Peninsula Substance Enforcement Team. He obviously is an integral part of the continual battle against what we are experiencing here in the Upper Peninsula as far as drug use. A perfect example would be he was involved in that case last night over on Fair Avenue, an integral part of it. We do have one detective sergeant who is assigned to the Michigan State Police Internet Crimes Against Children Unit, the ICAC Unit. He is, works over in that unit two days a week. And the benefit that we receive from that is that the state police trains him on forensic recovery of cell phones, and also sends him to trainings throughout the state and throughout the nation on dealing with internet crimes. That in turn allows us to have him go and speak not only at the schools regarding the use of cellphone use and the improper use of cellphone use, but also allows us to work with other agencies such as banks and stuff as far as the issues we, we see with internet crimes. So it's a huge benefit for us. Obviously, you saw the two that I had mentioned earlier about the market area public schools and the Kaufman contributions to our youth services officer. Are there any questions on section five?
More of a John question, but you've touched, I know before, one of my relatives was in the park, was part-time for, for Park Patrol or something like that. I know that's like, kind of out of your police, but. There's, I know, a friend of mine's a Prescott ward, and she's getting a lot of complaints about, you know, food trucks and other stuff, and, and dog stuff, more like for dogs and anything, but. I know you guys don't have time to be cruising around the island, and you guys would probably love to go for a cruise around the island, but, I mean, is there, is there a way to maybe budget next year for more Park Patrol possibly?
Yeah, we've, we've, we've kind of used our Park Patrol for a variety of different purposes, one of which is to kinda keep an eye on areas of concern. Obviously, everybody on the commission is aware of the popularity of Prescott and the issues that we're facing out there, so we are utilizing our Park Patrol to monitor the parking issues, the Black Rock issues, and some other issues that we face, not only there, but throughout some of the other areas. They do continually patrol South Beach, although there's not a, an assigned lifeguard to that particular beach, our Park Patrol does patrol that area and just kinda keep an eye on, on things. You know, the unique part about Marquette is there's so many user groups that wanna utilize the resources we have here, so sometimes, whether it be dogs, or whether it be, you know, alcohol on the beaches and stuff like that. So they're kind of a tool that we're allowed, that we utilize to kinda, to focus on areas that are a major concern at particular times of the year, so, especially during the summer.
I agree, maybe, I don't know if there's a way to maybe look at, you know, full-time patrol for the island, or some of the, obviously, you've got, we have a lot, you know, in the parks part, there's a lot of parks in the area you guys cover, you know?
Yeah.
But I mean, I remember you guys talked, because I'm, when I was a pipeback ward back in the days with Paul, you guys said, don't allow dogs in the island, you just open up the can of whoop, whoop butt, you know, and, and you're just asking for trouble, so he said, you know. It's, it's a shame, 'cause let be of a good dogs, but there's bad dogs, so.
Well, we, we have the luxury of working well with the fire department as far as the lifeguards and, and stuff, so we have some kinda eyes and ears out there that'll allow us to, to, to really focus our efforts in areas of concern, so.
Good job, Blake.
Thank you. So, is there any other questions? You guys, you got a question?
I might be looking at the wrong schedule here, but the one that you pointed out on eighty-two, as far as the pay schedule goes.
Okay.
Was everybody getting a two percent raise this year?
Was everybody getting a two percent raise?
Yes.
Top four spots in that police department are like seven.
Yeah, but you also gotta, we're still in our step increase stages, because we haven't reached our three-year top pay yet, so that's why these may look like a little different.
So you get a two percent plus step?
Yeah, we don't top out in our pay for three years, so I haven't been chief for three years, it's only been two years, so I get my two percent increase plus the step increase for being a department head.
That was new to me, and somebody else mentioned it earlier, so thanks for-
No, that's fine, that's no problem.
Great.
Let me explain, 'cause we were looking, then we started looking at the other, the other departments and-
Hey, that's, that's what we're here for.
Step was not, okay, thank you, that clarifies it.
No problem. Right, so I'm up in November, so that you might be saving some money there.
Okay.
You can take, you can take it over Mike.
Yeah. As far as our fee schedules, on page eighty-four and eighty-five, it was, we were directed to restructure our fee schedule, I believe it was last- I believe it was last budget year, so this is a fairly new fee schedule. And I don't, and we didn't really make any adjustments to that this year. We felt everything is fairly, uh, up to speed and, and probably accurate with, um, what's going on. We don't wanna, you know, I mean, there's a fine balance between overfining individuals for, you know, such, such things as parking and stuff, and so we really wanted to try to make it a fair fee schedule, which I think it is. Anything else on that? Okay, um, I guess on page eighty-six, um, it kind of goes to our expenditures. A lot of the, uh, the, the issues, or not issues, but a lot of the, the headings, I don't have a lot of control over. There's about probably six or seven, um, that I have control over, um, from office supplies to operating supplies. Two, uh, things I'd like you to note, um, in seven forty, uh, there's, uh, an increase of about thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, that's, uh, to upgrade our tablet system, or not upgrade our tablet sys- system, but to complement our tablet system, very much, uh, like last year when the Honorable Mayor Tom Baldini, um, mentioned about the, uh, um, e-citations, which is the ability to scan a license or punch a license into a tablet and then hit a button and print the ticket out instead of having to write it on a, on a three-piece carbon-type copy. So, uh, moving towards that technology actually saves us money in the long run as far as, um, having to order tickets and, and various things. So, um, that was something that we had planned on implementing over a, a year, you know, a, every other year process, instead of one lump sum one year, so that's the increase there. Uh, as far as the eight oh-one goes, um, that's our contractual. Uh, that covers, um, uh, like, our Michigan Association of Police dues, um, our memberships to that organization. Are also, um, our accreditation fee. Uh, we are currently in the process of, um, looking to be the first, uh, police department in the Upper Peninsula to become accredited through the Michigan Association of Police, Chiefs of Police. So our fees, um, uh, came out of that. Also, um, uh, some miscellaneous training fees as far as professional training for, um, some of our, uh, staff. Are there any questions at all for any of those? Okay. If you want to jump over to page one forty-eight, which would be the drug forfeiture. This is a fee, um, or this is a, a classification where money is put aside after, um, material or vehicles is forfeited through drug-related cases. Um, there's been a, a pretty dramatic drop-off in, in forfeiture cases, um, not just through our department, but statewide, just because forfeitures, um, have really been kind of restricted. It was kind of rogue, uh, for a long time, and, and there's been a lot more restrictions placed on, on this. So this fee pretty much stays the same. Uh, the money that we do have in this account, we do use for drug-related, um, cases or drug-related equipment, uh, one of which is a perfect example would be our canine. Um, our canine scud is seven years old, uh, we're gonna be looking to have to replace him at some point. So the money to, to do that would probably come, most likely come out of this fund to, to replace him, so, um... And now Gary doesn't like this fund, so... Are there any questions on the drug forfeiture fund? Um, our next one would be the, uh, page one fifty-seven, which is the training.
I want to say the, it's not a, it's not correct to say I don't like it. It's, when Mike was the police chief, he proudly pointed out that finance has absolutely no, no control over the drug forfeiture fund. And case in point, it's, it's actually illegal for us to write a check, the city to write a check for, say, we had an employee retire. It was actually illegal for us to buy that person a retirement cake. However, what Mike and his guys figured out, they could pay for that through the drug forfeiture fund. So we would see on the check register, a retirement cake, and other departments are calling me saying, "Hey, Gary, what's up?" And I'm like, "Well, that's the fund I have no control."
They were edibles.
So on page one fifty-seven, uh, this is the Criminal Justice Training Fund. And this fund is, uh, supplied by, uh, MCOs, which is the Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards. And so they, um, through money generated through, um, ticket revenues throughout the state, that money is reinvested into the criminal justice, uh, police agencies throughout Michigan, and it's based on the number of fully sworn police officers you have. So we, uh, generally get about sixty-four hundred dollars a year from MCOs, uh, which is put in this fund, which can be used strictly for training only. Um, it can't be used for anything else. And, uh, we use this money, and plus we match it, uh, through our budget. Uh, another sixty-four hundred dollars, which is, you know, about twelve thousand eight, eight hundred dollars, that we use to train our officers on mandatory training, whether it be firearms, uh, bloodborne pathogens, CPR, TASER, um, first aid, uh, AED, um, all the, the major, there's a core group of trainings that we have to do yearly, precision driving. So those are core trainings that we have to train our officers on every year, which were mandated not only through MCOs, but also, also through MML, um, to do that. So that's what this fund is for, it's a training fund, it's strictly for, for the training of our officers. Um, we've, we've tried to complement that by having a lot of in-house, um, training instructors, uh, CPR, AED, TASER, uh, defensive tactics, which has benefited us just because of the size of our department. But we are also part of a consortium through NMU, which also offers training to our officers at a discounted price, um, because of our membership, so... So that basically kind of sums up the, the account number two eighty-five, which is the, the Criminal Justice Training. Any questions on that?
Chief, you use, uh, Market Branch Prison's, uh, range for shooting?
Correct. We're very generous, the, the, the state of Michigan is very generous in letting not only us, but, um, pretty much every law enforcement agency in, in the UP, or not the UP, but Marquette County utilize that.
I think that's something that should be known, there's a lot of cooperation between the police agencies for a lot of training.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
It's a great thing.
Yep. So there's any questions on, on that? Are there any questions overall on any of the operational aspects of the police department?
Out of curiosity, the big number, um, for, uh, vehicle rentals. What are you renting?
We are part of the motor pool, so basically the money that you see on that account, I think it's two hundred and thirty thousand, that is given to motor pool, and that is put into a motor pool fund.
Gotcha.
And then, so what we're doing is we're renting our vehicles from that fund, and that allows, um, I, you'd probably be able to talk with Eric a little bit more on that when he's up, but basically, that's pooled together to help purchase, um, vehicles for, throughout the city, whether it be fire, public works, um, et cetera. So that's where, um, that money goes to.
It not only pays for the vehicles, but for maintenance, gas, everything is...
Oil changes and all the stuff associated with them. Yep. You know, and we're, you know, obviously, we have cars that are on the road three hundred and sixty-five, twenty-four hours a day, probably one of the only departments that has officers out all the time, so...
Makes sense.
Yeah. So, um, just on a side note, I am very proud of our department. We have probably the best group of guys that I've ever seen, uh, working, guys and girls, working for our department right now. They do great work every day, and, uh, we continue to, uh, really, uh, appreciate your support as a commission.
Chief, one question for you before you go, uh, how is Sergeant Sweetie?
Uh, she's coming back to work Monday.
Excellent.
So, uh, she's gonna be coming back to work in a limited capacity, um, but she's, uh, probably one of the toughest people I've ever met, and, uh, we look forward to having her back, and she'll do a great job.
Very much, you try to your department.
Yep.
So that's awesome, that's great news.
That's the story.
Yep. So, we look forward to seeing her back, and, uh, again, we appreciate your support. Any questions?
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that concludes today's, uh, schedule. Uh, next schedule is September fourth at five fifteen for the John Swinson Show. So with that, I will hand it over to Mike, if he has any final comments.
I do not.
Good.
We have to go through public comment yet? We do have...
Open public... Questions back there?
Open public comment.
Wanna say something?
We have one person.
Come on, you wanna say something?
Say something to...
Say something, say, no comment, please.
Validate us. Okay, seeing the one person doesn't want to speak, we're gonna close public comment. Comments from the commission?
Comments.
Anybody?
Anybody? You can't. No comments?
No comments.
City manager? We are adjourned.